Squid.
In pork?
In light.
For me, I'm joking.
I think anybody may be. It's not here.
No.
So, so.
Just put.
Yeah, same.
That was a minute or so. So, that was a meeting between me and. Regina.
He's not having that.
If, if I can, of course, I could cash in the play once before.
Unless you're on the.
Almost there. Fifteen seconds.
Oh, but same as you. Okay, look off.
Exactly.
Right time, he's not hearing him.
Yeah, there you go. Ten, nine, eight.
So, Sharon, Sharon.
Sharon, thank you. Yeah, you can slide out if you want. I think they moved your name there.
Well, they did.
Okay, you ready? Joe, you ready? Good evening. The Monday, January twenty-eighth common council meeting is now in session. Our invocation is by Pastor Jeffrey Kennedy of South Gate Church. Thank you, sir, for coming.
You're welcome. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight and we ask for your great wisdom for this body. Lord, we pray for our mayor and his loss this weekend. Ask that your comfort and peace would be with him and his family. Lord, we thank you for this city and all of the occupants here. Lord, all the people that you have blessed to live in this community, we thank you for them. We thank you for what you're doing. We thank you for the blessings that you pour upon us, oh God. Father, for the challenges that this, this great council has to wrestle with and to leave this city, I pray for great wisdom for them. Lord, would you bless their hearts and their homes? Be with their families tonight as they're serving us, would you serve them? And God, we just dedicate this night to you and we thank you for it and we ask for your wisdom. In Jesus' name, amen.
Before we do the pledge allegiance, I'd like to have a moment of silence for Police Officer Cabinet Shoe, Firefighter Como, and the Mayor's Father, Joseph Buttigieg. Thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and.
Thank you. Maybe see that, if you want, please turn your cell phones to silent. Ms. Fowler, welcome.
Councilmember President?
Here.
Councilmember McBride, please excuse me. Councilmember Broden?
Here.
Councilmember Leston?
Here.
Councilmember Davis?
Present.
Councilmember Boyd?
Present.
Councilmember Burden?
Here.
Vice President White?
Present.
President Scott?
Present.
Dave President.
Thank you. Before we get to special business, I just want to announce that Special Resolution nineteen oh five honoring Lucky Resnick is delayed, as well as Bill sixty-nine seventeen for Jefferson Boulevard amendment to zoning, and Resolutions nineteen oh one for property at thirty-six oh two West Sample Street, and the nineteen oh three, the southeast master plan, those are all delayed. So, if you're here for those, they will not be heard tonight.
And they'll be announced what?
Yeah, they'll, they'll be on public meeting for reschedule. Master Plan is February third. The West Sample Street exception is going to be in thirty days, and I believe in two weeks we'll hear Jefferson Boulevard.
Thank you.
So, so with that, we will turn to special business. Resolution nineteen oh six, Ms. Fowler, would you please read that?
I think I need to do subcommittee on minutes.
Oh, yeah, you do.
Yeah.
More jumping right to it. I'm sorry. This is subcommittee on minutes.
To the common council of the city of South Bend, subcommittee has inspected the minutes of the January fourteenth, two thousand nineteen minutes of the council and found them to be correct, therefore we recommend the same be approved.
Make a motion to accept the report from the subcommittee on minutes.
Second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Thank you and very value added there, Clark Fowler. Now, we'll move to special business in nineteen oh six, please.
Nineteen oh six, a resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, warning area residents of the dangers and prevalence in the human trafficking in this area.
Thank you, sir, President.
There is.
Name and address, sir.
Jake Teschka, two four one nine Chestiron Drive, South Bend.
Thank you.
A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, warning area residents of the dangers and prevalence of human trafficking in this area. Whereas, members of the public are generally aware of and are sympathetic to those who face the dangers of human trafficking, and whereas the nature, the true nature and the extent of this crime against individuals is nothing less than staggering, and whereas the Trafficking Victims Protection Act of two thousand defines sex trafficking as a commercial sex act that is induced by force, fraud, or coercion, or in which the person induced to perform such an act does not attain eighteen years of age. Labor trafficking is defined as the recruitment, harboring, transportation, provision, or obtaining of a person for labor or services through the use, use of force, fraud, or coercion, and for the purpose of subject, or subjected to involuntary servitude, peonage, debt bondage, or slavery. And whereas human trafficking is the fastest growing and second largest criminal enterprise in the world today, generating an estimated hundred and fifty billion dollars annually. And whereas throughout the world, over twenty-seven million people are exploited through human trafficking, with an estimated three hundred thousand American youth at risk of becoming victims of commercial sexual exploitation, and an additional forty-five, or sorry, fourteen thousand five hundred to seventeen thousand five hundred humans trafficked into the United States annually. And whereas these numbers are just the tip of the iceberg due to underreported, and with the number of cases increasing exponentially each year through the use of social media and the internet, and whereas South Bend and the surrounding areas are certainly not safe from these dangers, as shown by the recent discovery and rescue of five victims in southwest Michigan, and the arrests of traffickers in South Bend, Fort Wayne, and late two thousand seventeen, as a part of an FBI nationwide operation, which in a four-day period rescued eighty-four minors and arrested one hundred and twenty traffickers. And whereas the youngest victim recovered in the FBI operation was three months old, the average age of the victim being fifteen. And whereas the children and young adult victims are not just nameless and faceless unknowns, but includes our sons, our daughters, grandchildren, nieces, nephews, and the children playing outside next door. And whereas it is no longer enough to know of the problem, but now necessary to know about the problem, by independently seeking out information, and more importantly, when seeing anything that raises suspicion, doing something to inform the proper authorities or agencies. Now therefore, be it resolved by the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, as follows. Section one, human trafficking in any form is morally reprehensible and contrary to our cherished freedoms. Section two, everyone has a duty to do what is in their ability, to end human trafficking and to protect the victims. Section three, in addition to local and regional first responders, the following are some of the resources available to learn more or to take action. For anyone in danger, the National Human Trafficking Hotline, one eight 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 three seven three seven eight eight eight, or text two three three seven three three. The Indiana Attorney General, the Indiana Trafficking Victim Assistance Program, the Polaris Project, U.S. Department of Homeland Security's Blue Campaign, and In Our Backyard. The resolution shall be in full, full force and effect after its adoption by the common council and approval by the mayor.
Thank you, sir. Anything else you want to add?
I would. A couple of years ago, I stumbled upon the issue of human trafficking quite by accident, actually. A contemporary Christian music band that I like for King and Country has taken up the fight, and they are encouraging awareness all around the world through their concerts, as well as a song and a film both aptly named Priceless. These were the catalysts that sent me on a journey of learning and digging, which has been a roller coaster of discovering both nauseating fact and unrelenting hope. What I once believed was a problem that only affected third world nations, I found was not only existent, but prevalent, right here in the freest, most prosperous nation on the planet. And though it's gained relatively little attention, there's a wealth, wealth of information out there for those who dare scratch the surface. On February second of last year, my daughter was born. And having been the father of a young boy, the idea of raising a little girl was completely foreign to me. And I began to think about what the future held for her, both the bright possibilities and the potential pitfalls. It was in that moment, thinking about the roughly two hundred thousand cases of sexual exploitation of minors every year in the United States. And keep in mind, that is a, that is an underreported situation. And the fact that the average age of the girl trafficked first time ranges from twelve to fourteen years old, that I realized my solemn duty as a proud new father of a baby girl, to do anything within my power to protect her and those like her in our community. And so I dug in further, contacting various nonprofits focused on this issue, to see what I could do, organizations like In Our Backyard, founded and led by Nita Bellis, who wrote this sobering book that I would recommend to everyone. The Polaris Project and Shared Hope International. I continued my learning through reading and watching various documentaries, including I Am Jane Doe, Tripped, and In Plain Sight. I chatted with state legislators like former Representative Sally Seagrist, who is taking up the mantle in Indianapolis, and even recently attended a roundtable hosted by U.S. Representative Jackie Walorsky in conjunction with Uber, whose public policy team recognizes the potential for their platform to be used in nefarious ways, and are looking to contribute to a solution. And so this journey has led me here, presenting this resolution to you tonight at our last meeting in January, which is also Human Trafficking Prevention Month. And while it's not a final destination, it is an important stop on my personal fight against the scourge that is human trafficking. I urge you, my fellow councilmembers, to pass this resolution for the nearly twenty-seven million slaves throughout the world, for the one in six runaway youths to the United States in danger of being trafficked, for the vulnerable youth in our community, for our daughters, for our sons, for our grandchildren, and for those little ones next door. And finally, although it's not the case one hundred percent of the time, by and large, sex trafficking victims are purchased by men. And so I would like this to be a call to my fellow men, to learn and fully understand and take up the mantle of this issue, and the, learn about the devastating impact that it has on the lives of individuals and our life together as a society. It's basic economics. Where there is no demand, there will be no supply. So while I'm confident that law enforcement will do everything in their power to stop traffickers and pimps and rescue the victims, it is ultimately up to us to put an end to this atrocity once and for all. Thank you.
Thank you. This time, anyone from council want to make a comment? We'll start with Second District.
Councilman Teschka, I just want to really appreciate you bringing this to us today. I was not aware that this was human trafficking month. And as you said in the, it's, it's not just important to know of, but to know about. You've brought lots of really good information. But along with that information, you really opened my heart to the issue with your own personal experience and your passion for it. That really came through and we appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing this forward today and also the timeliness of it. I remember several years ago when the Super Bowl was being hosted in Indianapolis, there was just a huge flurry of activity, public awareness, action, really statewide, and, and you know, it elevated it as an issue, I think, across our state, and there was actually national media coverage and some cooperation that heretofore hadn't been seen. But unfortunately, you know, then it kind of all went quiet again. And I, your, the book that you referenced, the In Plain Sight, I mean, it really is. So we need better eyes, we need, you know, heightened awareness, but, but we need that, you know, sustained passion that you bring tonight, but the willingness to learn more, know more, do more. So I particularly appreciate the, the call to action for all of us, the call to action that, that you specifically gave with regard to the demand side, and the resources that you embedded into this resolution tonight. I think all of those are tools that, that will be very helpful. And just thank you very much for your work on this, and thanks for elevating it, particularly during this month, and appreciate it. Thank you.
Oh, we did. Thank you so much, Councilman Teschka, for leading us in this discussion tonight. As a social worker, oftentimes in my profession, I have a classmate at USC. This is her area of expertise that she brings to us every week as we have our class discussions regarding her passing too, and shared many of the stats that you have looked at. And when you consider the fact that ninety-three percent of victims are females, when you look at, so many of them are, you're talking twelve to fourteen, it's frightening thought, you know, being a father of two daughters. It's amazing to see how they could be targeted. And even working at the schools, I'm over at Dickinson Riseup, and I have a lot of my classes and groups I have for a lot of the young ladies there, and see how vulnerable so many of them are. When we look at that, it's, it's a scary thing. And it's a scary thing when you look at human trafficking at that stage, as you talked about. It's also a scary thing when their parents are dating, especially if they are a single parent and single mom, when single mom's boyfriend shows up to the house. And I have to deal with those kind of matters all the time. Single mom looks, single boyfriend looks at daughter and wants to date daughter, and mom says, okay, and then you can date me. It's, it just, that stuff gets on my everlasting nerves, but it's real. So I appreciate your call to action and support you in whatever efforts that we can do as a council to raise this awareness. Thank you.
Boyd? Just, thank you for shedding light on this issue that is obviously so important. Thank you.
Councilwoman White, I would personally thank you for bringing this before the council and especially the call for action. I would hope that copies of this resolution could be shared within our schools and other agencies, because the resources that you have listed are so important. I think that when we think about our children, we, we have a responsibility to protect our children, and your call for action really raises the need for this community, really throughout the nation, to do so. And so I'm very excited, somewhat saddened that we have to have this discussion by this one, in which I'm hoping that the communities will come together and support as we move forward. So thank you so much again.
Councilperson Teschka, I reflect a lot of the same points that Joe Broden stated earlier, you know, at Super Bowl time, we hear all about this. It makes national news. Indianapolis probably did the best job, I think, being proactive, but we'll hear about it in Atlanta, and we hear about it, you know, this time of year, and probably rightfully so this should be, at this time of year, for national attention. But it can't, it's got to go beyond just one, one weekend, you know, where a Super Bowl is being played. I would like to ask you and our intern to work together to put this back up on social media, on our Facebook page, and, and get it out there with the, the references and the data, and let's try to promote that. And also, I agree with Councilperson White, that we need to get this out to the schools and other people for their attention. But the, the information is there, and I appreciate that. So I'm glad you brought it to the forefront, and what we need to do is remind ourselves of this awareness now and in the summertime as well.
Just one, one more quick thing.
Yes, sir.
I forgot to mention that on the ledge over here, for anybody in attendance tonight, there is a few resources that I have from the Department of Homeland Security, as well as from in our backyard, that you can take with you, take multiple copies, distribute it as you would like. And, and I have been working with Chief Ruskowski and Chief Cox as well. Our, our first responders are on the front lines. They see a lot of this stuff day in and day out, and at times it would be easy to miss. And so it's very important for them to be trained on knowing the signs and what to do if they, if they see it. And, and so it's something that we'll keep at as a community, and raising awareness is key.
Thank you.
Could we, excuse me, could we enter those into the public record, though, right now, to make sure that it's part of our file for this evening?
Absolutely.
Yeah, we certainly can. At this time, I'll open up to the public, anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of nineteen oh six, please come to the podium. Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak against nineteen oh six, please come to the podium. Again, I'll turn it back to council. Second, all in favor? All opposed? Thank you, sir. You're done. Ms. Fowler, would you read nineteen thirteen, please? Here you go.
Nineteen oh six.
No, nineteen thirteen. You told somebody, aren't you?
Nineteen thirteen, a resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, honoring and thanking, thanking Dr. Green for several decades of devoted service to the city of South Bend.
Thank you, is there a presenter or presenters?
Yeah.
Hug later, please.
Okay. Oliver Davis, eighteen oh one Nash Street, South Bend, Indiana, four six six one three, Sixth District Councilman.
Karen White, a large councilperson, nineteen twelve, Melverne Wade, South Bend, Indiana, four six six point four.
We are pleased to present this resolution. It says, a resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, honoring, thanking Dr. Mark Green for several decades of devoted service to the city of South Bend. Whereas Dr. Mark R. Green received his educational training from Eureka College in Eureka, Illinois, where he graduated his degree in chemistry, and from the University of Illinois Dental School, Doctor of Dental Surgery, where he graduated in nineteen seventy-nine. Whereas in October of nineteen eighty-one, Dr. Green opened his dental office, Green Family Dentistry on Lincoln Way West, South Bend, Indiana, where he and his dental staff professionally cared for thousands of patients for thirty-seven years until he closed the office in November of two thousand eighteen. And whereas Dr. Green devoted many hours of service to South Bend community in a variety of capacities, such as serving as the chairman of health and wellness committee for the one hundred black men of Greater South Bend, serving as a board member of the Community Wellness Partner Minority Health Coalition, serving as a board member of Friends for the San Jo County Library, served as past president of the Board of the San Jo County Public Library, and serving as a big mentor for Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and serving as a life member of the NAACP, and. I got one too, one more? Cool, cool, fine, no problem. Whereas, Dr. Green's professional accomplishments also include his being a life member to the American Dental Association, a member of the Indiana Dental Association, past president of North Central Dental Association, and a member of the Pierre Foster Academy, and a member of International College of Dentists, USA Section, and a life member of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated, being a recipient of the Dr. Reverend Margaret DeKinni Junior Major Award in two thousand five in South Bend, Indiana, and.
No.
Whereas, Dr. Green has been and is a member of the Greater St. John Missionary Baptist Church in South Bend, Indiana, where he has served as chairman of the BTU as senior school teachers, served as a deacon and a supervisor of the Combined Youth Ministry. Whereas, Dr. Green has taught numerous students in his role as an agile clinical professor at Indiana University, South Bend, and has also served as a dental staff member of the St. Joseph Regional Medical Center. Whereas, Dr. Green and his wife Pamela Green, who managed their Green Family Dentistry for thirty-seven years, have three adult children and seven grandchildren. Whereas now, therefore, be it resolved by the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, as follows. Section one, the South Bend Common Council proudly honors and thanks Dr. Mark R. Green for nick, for nearly four decades of dedicated service to the city of South Bend. Section two, the common council recognizes during those forty years, Dr. Green's dedication and service has enhanced the quality of life for countless individuals. Section three, the common council also recognizes and thanks Mark, wife Pam, for graciously working together with him as a team in their services to the people of South Bend, Indiana.
Section four, the common council wishes Mark and his family the very best during his retirement. Section five, this resolution shall be in full force and effect after its adoption by the common council and approval by the mayor. Dr. Green has been my dentist for the last twenty-seven years.
I think there's a conflict.
Oh, big time conflict. These teeth will tell you there's a big time conflict, up and lower. He found my first cavity, and so I tell you the truth, I wanted a second opinion, but it was. And Alex is last patient at his office after he finished his meeting. I was the last one to close up. So it's been great, you know, in the Greens, and they have been such an inspiration, not only into dental practice, but also throughout what they have given in the community and all the boards that you heard us read, and the family. It's just been an honor to meet them. And he's still working in the community and IU and other places, but I wanted to make sure that we love the councilwoman White, that we honor her hand for what he has done here, and his wife and Mrs. Green, who's been there with him and has also been great to talk with and be a part. It's just, driving past their place right now is really a stand occasion for me, and, but you know, it's, it's great to know that they have lived to see this opportunity to retire, so that's a blessing.
Thank you.
I would like to say it is really an honor to be part of this resolution and honor Dr. Green. Not only is he a community person, a business person, but I have given him a new title, and he's unaware of this new title. He is now an honorary member of Delta Sigma Theta, the South Bend Alumni Chapter. I say that very proudly, because every activity that we have been involved with, I can always look and know that Mr. Green is going to be there, along with his grandchildren. He is a community person. He has given to this community, not only in terms of his business, but his commitment to public service. And again, you know, I'm sad that he had to close his, his business, but he has three grandchildren others that he had to tend to, but he will always be a member of our sorority.
Thank you. Does anyone else from that party would like to say a few words? Name and address, please.
Good evening. Thank you for having us this evening. It's been an honor to speak in front of you, but also I just want to express my appreciation for acknowledging my father and his service in the community as well. We grew up there, at the office on Lincoln Way West, and spent many, many hours, and I even dedicated some time back to the office, just because they've been a great example, my parents. And it's because of them that I've decided to, to work in service and raise our family. I have my husband here and my two girls, and so they've just been a great example to us, and again, thank you for this, because this is something that we can look back to and just, it's our legacy, and I really appreciate it.
For the record, would you state your name and address, please?
Yes, Kimberly Green Reeves. My address is five zero five 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 Galaxy Drive, and my husband would talk about me later if I didn't say Kimberly Green Reeves.
Thank you. Sir, would you like to say something?
Yes, I would.
Your name and address, please.
My name is Mark Green. My address is five nine two four nine Deer Run Court, South Bend, Indiana. My office address, though, is twenty-two oh one Lincoln Way West. And you know, it's been a great time there. We've enjoyed our time here. I never thought I would be here this long, but I have been. I never thought I would be here this long, but I have been, and I'm not going to become a snowbird. We're going to stay in the area. We love it here. We are just dedicated to the community. I appreciate my church family showing up to support me tonight. We thought there would be more, but I think the weather had a little bit to do about that. But I really appreciate this, and, you know, I feel funny because I don't think I did anything outside of what is expected of all of us to do. You know, it's called upon us to serve each other, and that's what I think I did. But thank you for recognizing me.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, we'll come back to council. Comments? We'll start with Mr. Furley. Oh, I'm sorry, sir. Name and address.
James Heard, 1151 934, Waters Edge Court, here in South Bend, Indiana. You might, I've been on the Greater St. John Missionary Baptist Church where Andre A. McGee is my pastor, which just recently was awarded the Young Major Award, as well as our church. But let me say that Mark Green, or at our church, he would be Deacon Mark Green. I'm chairman of the board at Greater St. John Missionary Baptist Church. Deacon Mark Green is my co-chairman, and I can honestly say, not only he was my dentist as well, but in addition to that, we are fraternity brothers. And so over the years, it's just been a pleasure to work with Dr. Green, Deacon Green, and everything that I've called upon for him, certainly as a person, he has always responded and has done very well. So all I got to say is congratulations, and you couldn't ask for a better person to receive this, sort of, this resolution.
Thank you. With that, we'll come back to council members.
Thank you for your service, Dr. Green.
Mr. Worthy?
Yeah, thank you for your service. It's incomprehensible, that list of things that you've accomplished. Thank you.
So I ran around as a little girl on Lincoln Way West, too, so I relate to your story of hanging out at your dad's place of employment. You know, you said this is just kind of what you do, we're all called to do, but, I mean, 37 years in any one profession, and, you know, that's quite an accomplishment. And I think of, you know, the schedule of a dentist and the number of people that you impacted just right there, you know, just direct service. But I think I'm really also moved by just the thread, you know, throughout all of the different things that you have done in the community and really sharing yourself, your wisdom, your skills, your talents, and really being a role model. So it's great to have this opportunity to lift you up, to lift your family up, because it's never done in a vacuum, right? And your family, but your church family and the folks that you lean on for support and vice versa. And thank goodness, Councilmember Dave has found you and you're single all those years ago. And I'm thinking in terms of your new title, I'm assuming you have a red tie and red sock? Okay. But congratulations.
Thank you.
I just want to thank you for, of course, all of your service, certainly a model for what we should be doing. You're absolutely right. It is very common, what you've done, and yet uncommon in the same vein. You are absolutely a pillar, and you absolutely solidify your legacy in this community, not by just staying here and not being a snowbird, sticking around, because you have so much more to give still. But also in your family, your daughter and the work that she's doing, you've certainly been a model for her, and she's carrying on that legacy, and that will continue, I'm sure, with those three beautiful granddaughters there. So thank you again, and look forward to continued work and service in this community.
Dr. Green, thank you so much for everything that you've done. You are a shining example, and that's the good thing about this council and what we've done is you are going down in the history of the common council and the city, and this is all going to be part of the public record, going back to 1865. You're part of history. And you might think it's common, we like to set examples and show and have evidence of examples of someone that does the right thing, and we appreciate that and appreciate you being that asset within our community. So I think one of those granddaughters were fussing a little bit earlier. She's definitely got the pipes for city council, so when she gets old enough, we'll see her up here. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So with that, I'll open up to the public. Anyone from the public wanting to speak in favor of this resolution, 1913, please come to the podium. Seeing none, anyone daring to wish to speak against it, you might get bit by Oliver Davis. Come to the podium. With that, we'll turn it back to council.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Worthy! Take a handshake.
Thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations. Are you now on behalf of the church community?
All right, let's grab a quick pic. I have to photo bomb my little voice.
Sit up top.
So I've seen you.
Like it or not?
Like watch.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah. I can't remember my hours.
I thought that was one and lose, then another game, one and lose.
Thank you, Doug.
I'm thinking at least get it out now.
At this time, we have no reports from city offices. Thank Laura Sullivan for being the audience from the mayor's office. With that, I'll entertain a motion to rise and join the committee. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? There you go, Mr. Worthy.
The committee of the whole is now in session. This is the portion of the council meeting where the full council meets as a committee. During each ordinance, members of the public will have an opportunity to speak either in favor or in opposition. Your comments will be limited to five minutes. With that, will the city clerk please read bill number 119?
General 119, public hearing on an ordinance to vacate the following described property, north south alley, 14 feet, no, 14 inches, width running north approximately 130 feet from the south rightway of Bryant Street, east west alley.
The property, the Public Works and Property Vacation Committee met earlier, did not take action on this for lack of a court. He's making a presentation here. Please approach the podium, state your name and address, and tell us what your petition is all about.
My name is Bully Rogers. I live in Tinsley Street, Bryant, South Bend, and my petition is to vacate an alley of 14 feet next to my property and the neighbor's property. And I'm using it for parking my vehicles because the street is too narrow to park on the street. If there's not enough room for cars, two cars come at the same time, and this could be a problem.
Could I ask you, was there any opposition voiced at the Board of Public Works hearing before they took action?
No.
Very good.
Just as a note, I touched base with Public Works to confirm Board of Public Works was favorable in Public Works.
Cool. Thank you. Comments? Mr. Worthy, will it be split between the two neighbors, or will it be all yours all the way over to the neighbor's lot?
It'll be all mine.
Okay.
Then if they don't want to have it, then we do theirs.
Okay. Then they weren't against at all?
No.
All right. Thank you, sir. Cool. Any other comment, council members?
It is, yeah, it is by half technically the other neighbors, though, right? Wasn't there a call for an agreement with the other neighbors or not?
Um, yeah.
In the record, I just want to...
That's usually how it goes. In this case, it sounds like this gentleman has been taking care of the property on both sides for like 20 years. So I think with that being said, the information is sent to everyone within a 300-foot radius, and they didn't respond or show up to any meetings. So with that being said, usually it goes in the favor of the petition.
Right. And the assessor would take action to add that to his property, right?
Yes.
Okay. Regina?
Question. So just clarity, you don't own the other property on the other side of the alley?
No, not yet.
Okay. So that's a problem. I'm sorry, say that again?
No, I'm trying to hold it so I can pay taxes.
Oh, okay, gotcha. That's right. Okay. Thanks.
Someone else said there. Tim?
As a representative for this district, I'm in full support of the gentleman. As I've stated consistently in the past on alley vacations, safety is the crucial part of this. Cars can travel those lengths in a matter of seconds, really. Anything to bring equality of life and betterment of the property. The streets are very narrow down there. We've been working on curbs and sidewalks down in there. We're also going to work on drainage issues down there. But, yeah, getting cars off that street will be an asset.
Thank you. Thank you.
I want to make sure I heard you correctly. For 22 years, you've been taking care of this property. Okay. Thank you for doing so. Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, we'll go to the public portion. Anyone here to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone in opposition to this petition? And we'll come back to the council.
Motion to send the full council favorable. Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, goes to council favorable. Will the clerk please read that section?
Motion to adjourn. I'm ready to hold.
So move.
Short duty.
And save it.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion to adjourn the committee of the whole. Back to full council. Bill's third reading. Ms. Fowler, 0119, please.
0119, third reading on an ordinance to vacate the following described property, north south alley, 14 inches, and width running north approximately 130 feet from the north rightway of Bryant Street, east west alley.
We'll pass it to Bill 0119.
Second.
Ms. Fowler, roll call.
Councilmember Tescott.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Worthy.
Aye.
Councilmember Burley.
Aye.
Vice President White.
Aye.
Councilmember Preston.
Aye.
Councilmember Burley.
Aye.
President Scott.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. You're good, sir. Thank you. With that, we'll move to resolutions. You're welcome. Resolution 1901 has been continued, and resolution 1903 is continued. We will move to 1907, please.
We need to make a motion to continue. I'm going to just add that.
Motion to continue both 1901 and 1903.
I'll second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Are they date specific or just?
No. I didn't put a date on it.
February 11th is 1903.
Okay.
But that was made public by...
And then you wanted 1901 the second February, right?
That's correct. Second of February.
25th.
Yeah. 25th of February. Cool. I'm at peace.
And those will be made public and announced publicly.
Okay. I'm at peace.
Ms. Fowler, 1907, please.
President Scott.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make a motion for just, for the purposes of public hearing, to hear Bill 19, resolution, I'm sorry, 1907, 1909, and 1911 together.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Ms. White.
Community investment in that earlier today, but we did not have a court, so we send this over with no recommendation.
On all three, right?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there a presenter?
I'm going to read all three.
Yep, please read all three.
1907, a resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as 2920 West Sample Street, South Bend, Indiana, 46619, an economic revitalization area for purposes of a six-year vacant building tax abatement for SWGS Properties LLC. 1909, a resolution of the common council of the city, designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as 2920 West Sample Street, South Bend, Indiana, 46619, an economic revitalization area for purposes of a six-year real property tax abatement for SWGS Properties LLC. 1911, a resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as 2920 West Sample Street, South Bend, Indiana, 46619, an economic revitalization area for purposes of a five-year personal property tax abatement for SWGS Properties LLC.
Thank you. Is there a presenter?
Good evening, council. Dan Buckenmeyer, Director of Business Development. Office is on the 14th floor of this building. So thank you for hearing all three of these together. I will present them as a group, and I will disperse your information. SWGS Properties LLC is a landowner but a division of Grace Steel or joint venture, so I'm going to be referring to them as Grace Steel, and we have the petitioners here as well, and I'll introduce them in a moment. Again, what we've done here is a short stack of amendments. We've done this for other petitioners in the past. We're doing this to create as much value as possible, but still reasonably, as you'll see when we do a little bit of look out into what the results are in terms of return on investment. The vacant building tax phase-in, a real property tax phase-in, and then personal property tax phase-in on capital elements or capital equipment that they will purchase at this facility. So the facility that we're looking at is 2920 West Sample, again, just west of Oliver Street and Sample. It is a building that's been vacant for some years, is in rough and declining shape, so we are thrilled as a city to have someone coming in and making a significant investment to both clean up the surrounding property, which I'll show a few quick pictures of, but also renovate the building. They are purchasing the building for $765,000, and they are planning to put half a million dollars at least into renovation of the building and grounds. Their business, and I'll allow them to expand on this, is a great business model, a sustainable business model that adds value to steel second, steel seconds, if you will. Let them expand on that. Again, a few pictures of, here's a loading dock area. You can see the building in disrepair, the doors in need of replacement and so on. You can see the vegetation in the background there that's overgrown. You can see even more so in this photo looking the other direction. It's a property in some need of attention. I was going to joke this afternoon, I'm not sure where the plant for the hot tub is, but we found out that that will be removed along with some other environmental mitigation that will take place before they take ownership of the property, which is additional great news. You can see then, just from a few quick pictures of the interior, that the building itself, there are issues with the roof, there are leaks and so on and so forth, so it's going to be really wonderful to get this legacy property back into operation on the tax rolls, et cetera. In addition, again, to the vacant building and real... Um, in addition, again, to the vacant building and real property tax phase-ins that will address these issues with the property and building, uh, they are making a seven hundred thousand dollar roughly investment in equipment that will then be housed and utilized in the facility, uh, again, to value-add activities to the, uh, steel coil and, and sheet steel. So, again, kinda summarizing the entire, uh, package that we've, uh, put together and are recommending for council here. Um, the assessed value presently is about five fifty, the annual taxes are about twenty thousand. Um, Councilman Wardy, you asked a question this afternoon, which I do wanna address, you had asked about, um, the, uh, obsolescence, potential obsolescence discount, so we did a little research on that property and actually in two thousand thirteen, the, uh, landowner, uh, property owner did file an appeal and got a functional obsolescence discount. So it's notable that, I'll, I'll show you where that jogs some of our numbers, it actually makes them better for the city, I'm sorry to report, you'll have a few more dollars in taxes to pay, uh, not the surprise you were waiting for here. Um, but in any event, uh, the, uh, net result is that that twenty thousand dollars per year is net of an eighteen percent discount presently, which will disappear as those improvements are made. Uh, they're making a private investment in this, uh, project, building, property and so on, of over two million dollars and committing to, over the next four years, sixteen new full-time jobs with, uh, significant annual and individual payroll. Uh, in addition, they're gonna bring, um, four jobs which they will retain, which will come over from a much smaller facility that they've been operating out of in Mishawaka. So if, uh, I, you look at the, uh, the, the middle, um, and going down is the vacant, the real and the, uh, personal property tax amount, it gives you an idea of what we're abating or phasing, uh, the, the results of the phase-in. Um, we're offsetting about two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars in total taxes for them in the, the early parts of this, um, these six and, and the, and the personal five-year tax abatements to allow them to make those investments. Um, but they will still be paying a total of about fifty-five thousand and that'll go up a little bit with the, the aforementioned obsolescence. But, uh, um, about fifty-five, sixty thousand dollars in taxes over that ten years. And if we look at that, again, it starts to get a little bit, uh, complicated just in the, the different colors represent the different, uh, uh, tax phase-ins and so on, but you can see almost in year five and certainly by year six, we start seeing a return on this. And in fact, if, if we were to take no action here, if we weren't to support them and this building remained in disuse, under use, and, and continue to crumble, if you will, we'd see likely less than two hundred thousand dollars in tax revenue over the next ten years with no action. And actually, that second number bumps up about twenty thousand to two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars that will be paid in, uh, our estimation again of taxes over the next ten years. So it's a solid return on investment, it's a win-win for them to invest and the city to see that return. Uh, and then just a few quick pictures for you to take a look at before I bring the petitioner up. Um, this is what it looks like today and they've got some great renderings that, uh, they brought along today. Um, gonna do some wonderful improvements on the streetscape along Sample, um, you know, there's currently guardrail and vegetation and so on that will be removed and replaced with a new facade and, uh, other elements to really dress up the community. Um, and we are excited about that. I'll leave you at that before and after and happy to take any questions or introduce the petitioner.
Any questions right now? You can have this comment.
Alright, David, if you wanna come up and say a few words?
Please state your name and address and just give us a brief overview.
Okay, I'm David Andre, two one six oh one Durham Way, Bristol.
I'm Pam Andre, same address, two one six oh one Durham, Bristol.
Uh, Pam actually started Grace Steel three years ago, uh, and ran it largely as a brokerage, uh, operation. It's grown tremendously. Uh, we, we, our, our largest portion of our business is taking heads and tails secondary steel in sheet form, our largest supplier of steel warehouse, uh, which is immediately across the railroad tracks from this, uh, property. Uh, and we transform that material into parts, uh, and/or distribute it, uh, once, once it's been cleaned up, sheared, or will be laser cut into, uh, usable parts. The industries we serve are the truck trailer industry, some to RV, uh, customers as far away as Alabama and Missouri, um, and a lot of, a lot of customers around this area. So we're excited to, uh, to be in the neighborhood, um, we're excited to take on this opportunity and, uh, and excited to be on, on Sample Street and have an opportunity to give back to the community. So that is, that is actually one of the visions of Grace Steel. That's why, that's why we started it and that's why it's named Grace Steel. So we wanna, we want an opportunity to give back. So we appreciate, uh, your support and it wouldn't, this project wouldn't be possible without all the support we've gotten since then.
Thank you. Any questions for the petitioner? No? Alright, we'll open up to the public, anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of either nineteen oh seven, nineteen oh nine, or nineteen eleven? Please come to the podium. Let me scan the whole room. Alright, we'll come back, anybody wishing to speak against nineteen oh seven, nineteen oh nine, and nineteen eleven, please come to the podium. Seeing none, I will, I do have one question for Dan and then I'll open up to my other council colleagues. Dan, you mentioned the two hundred and forty-three thousand, uh, that does not include any economic impact on having basically twenty workers, uh, in our city either, does it?
No, that doesn't even factor that in.
Right, so that's always a good, good thing to remember.
Another good thing to remember, I, I forgot to mention, of course, it was alluded to, but I, I clearly stated it is a woman-owned business as well.
Great, certified? Awesome, great. Uh, any questions or comments from council?
Quick question.
I'll get to you last, Mr. Davis, go ahead.
Um, one of the things that we've been talking about with economic development is of course bringing jobs, that's really, really important. Um, also important, one of the statistics I heard that a lot of the jobs that we have in South Bend are actually, um, are, are actually, the people who work at South Bend actually live outside the city. Do you have any plans or do you know, like, in terms of recruitment? Um, this is an area where you're opening up, where there's a lot of, you know, uh, a lot of issues and a lot of people in need of work. Do you have any ideas or thoughts or plans on how you might recruit for those positions?
Um, we, uh, we would love to have, uh, people from the neighborhood and the area there. Uh, there's certainly a shortage of, of workers, uh, you know, in, in the surrounding counties as well. So, uh, so we have not started, uh, to reach out there yet, but we certainly plan.
Great, well, I look forward to working with you or anything and tap into schools or what we can do to train up people that can actually fill some of those jobs right from the neighborhood.
That would, that would be fantastic.
Great, thanks.
Uh, in fact, uh, we talked about it a little bit when, uh, when Councilman Davis came out to visit us on Sunday. We really appreciate him coming out, so, uh, we, we really do wanna reach out to the community.
Great, thank you.
See, just a couple comments, um, I really love this particular project and, uh, each time you present, I love it more. And, and, and here's why, okay, um, from, from my calculations, um, environmental cleanup, you're improving a site, um, you're recycling a building, it's used, uh, your project, your product is actual the second life of a material, right? Um, and, uh, you know, with your plans and especially if you, um, you know, hit and if, I guess I wanna say, how can we help you deliver on what I think would really knock this out of the ballpark even further is that intentional advertising, recruitment, training, helping you, what resources can we as a community bring to you? Um, you know, to help land these jobs, you know, with, with, not just within the neighborhood, but with the neighbors. Um, so let's, I, hopefully we can continue the conversation and, and how we can support that.
We really appreciate that.
Kimmy?
Oh, no, just wanna say thank you and I love the title of your business and look forward to working with you.
Well, thank you.
Anyone else? Formerly the Vice President of the Common Council, Oliver Dix.
Amazing grace! Yeah, um, first of all, it was a pleasure meeting with you all, uh, thank you for the tour of your facility. Um, I really look forward to that sunshiny picture down there. Um, the, uh, people who did your art, um, really captured that essence and that. It's nice to see how you all, uh, through our conversation yesterday, we were talking about not only your business and not only the workers, but building up the neighborhood there, as you see, uh, like I told you right across the street is where I get my hair cut. And, um, of course, the donuts right there too, right next to them too, I mean, very delicious to go along with this whole project. And so, um, it's, it's a great spot in town, uh, I think having this kind of really revitalizing, that's the whole thing. I appreciate your comments too regarding the other situation that we were dealing with today and it puts it all in the context of, um, while this is industrial, there's, uh, sometimes people don't put industrial and environment all in the same concept. You know what I mean? And I liked what you have, uh, proposing is industrial and green kind of concepts. It's, it's, it's something that I think we really need to push more because when we think about industrials, it's like, uh, it's dump, trash, whatever, any kind of thing, pollution, but you're not, you're not coming with that. You're, you're coming with, uh, industrial, build up the community, a cleanup to the environment, all in one. And, um, that's what we really need in that area, it's a different approach that oftentimes has been overlooked. And, um, I think your organization, your company can be a catalyst for change in that area. And we, as we talked yesterday about nearby schools like in Navara, Harrison, and others, um, just, it's, you wanted to talk about buyback into it and then you're already with the UA, um, you're, which that, what's the UA, um, with Karen, which that, um, UA?
UA.
UA, thank you, you're already a part of that. And so, it's, it's just nice to hear in the conversation, to say everything, so I wanna thank you again and, um, let's roll.
Okay.
Iowa hot guys, huh? I told my daughter about that too, yeah, she was glad that you could hear about Iowa hot guys, yeah, cool.
Make a motion for the adoption of nineteen oh seven?
Second. Uh, Ms. Fowler, roll call, please.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye!
Councilmember Wardy?
Aye!
Councilmember Burley? Council, Vice President White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember Broden?
Aye.
Councilmember Tescus?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you.
One, one quick thing, I just wanna also thank Dan for sending me the email to notify everything else, I appreciate giving the heads up on everything, so, uh, I really appreciated that, so, thank you.
Yes, there's three resolutions, so we need to...
Yep.
Motion for the adoption of nineteen oh nine.
Second?
Ms. Fowler?
Councilmember Wardy?
Aye!
Councilmember Burley?
Aye.
Vice President White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember Wardy? I'm sorry, bro.
Point of order down there, point of order?
Aye.
By the way, name.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm...
It's okay.
I'm distracted.
Take your time.
Councilmember Tescus?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye!
President Scott?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you!
Move for the adoption of nineteen eleven.
Second. Ms. Fowler, nineteen eleven.
Councilmember Burley?
Aye.
Vice President White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember Broden?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye!
Councilmember Wardy?
Aye!
President Scott?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Ms., Ms. Broden, do you need a five minute review? So move!
Ms. Fowler, uh, zero four nineteen, please.
Zero four nineteen, a resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, a complaint and petition of the area board of zoning, located at eleven nineteen, East West Alley.
Uh, I move that this be sent to the Area Plan Commission for their meeting on February nineteenth and then back to the Council of Zoning Act Sanction Committee, um, uh, February twenty-fifth.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Unfinished business, uh, Ms. Fowler, uh, no, I had to take a motion on nineteen oh nine.
What's going on? Nineteen oh nine?
Oh, I'm sorry, nineteen oh four.
What is the motion?
I want to take a motion to send this to AVZA for two fifteen and ZNA.
So move!
Two twenty-five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Uh, new business, um, would Laura Sullivan come to the podium, please? And would you update us on the weather and, uh, the governmental shutdown? You have live minutes.
Sure, uh, Laura Sullivan, Chief of Staff, Mayor's Office, Officer, I'm reporting for this building. Uh, so today we sent out a press release, which hopefully you all received, um, letting folks know that city offices will be closing at noon on Tuesday and, uh, through, um, noon on Thursday. However, I just got word that it looks like county offices are gonna be closed all day on Thursday with that the county city building assuming will be closed, so, um, we'll be putting out there whether or not we'll open at noon or if we'll be closed for the whole day on Thursday. Uh, we've opened up, uh, we'll be opening up a warming center at the Charles Black Center, um, starting tomorrow at, um, nine AM through Friday at eight PM in conjunction with both the Red Cross and the EMA. Um, we'll be open to folks around the clock for that period of time. Um, also, just wanna let you know that we are working with, um, South Bend Community School Corp. on hopefully setting up, um, a busing situation that would be able to provide buses for those at Weather Amnesty at both the Tut Street location and also Center for the Homeless, to get them from those locations in the morning over to Broadway Church for breakfast, then picking them up there and taking them then to Hope for lunch, um, and then, um, to one of, uh, the warming sites then during the afternoon, getting picked up at the warming sites then in the afternoon and then bringing them, um, back to Hope for dinner and then from Hope back to Center for the Homeless. So that is, we're, we're working with South Bend Community Schools on that. Fingers crossed we're able to get a bus for that, but just wanna make sure everyone knows that we are working on that diligently. Um, can I answer any other questions?
Transport?
Transport, yes, we work with Transport there Tuesday through Thursday, will be fare-free, so, uh, they'll be running their regular bus routes as long as possible unless we get some surprise snow, um, but anyone that gets on a bus, they'll be able to ride for free for those three days. Um, and, as you know, most of these services are close to bus stop, so, and if all, all fails with our efforts on getting a bus for kind of door-to-door service, there will be Transport free available for all residents.
Cool.
And, uh, volunteer opportunities or donations?
Volunteer opportunities, um, they should, um, contact the Emergency Management Agency for volunteering. Let me see if I happen to have a phone number, yep, EMA's number is five seven four two three five nine three five eight. Um, as far as animals go, I mentioned that as well.
Mm-hmm.
South Bend Animal Care Council, um, has been reminding residents that all animals must be indoors during the spring temps. Um, if they find animals outside, they should call five seven four two three five nine three, um, zero three. We also encourage residents to, um, visit the Saint Joe County Health Department, um, website for information on cold weather tips. That site is sjchd.org, um, yes.
And they also board any animals too for free.
Yes, and, um, the, my understanding is also the Humane Society is also helping with that.
Mm-hmm.
Great.
Anything else for this or so? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the information and, uh, we'll point towards that on the website as well.
Great, three one one is also just another great resource there, with, um, with all this information, as we're... hearing about additional warming centers with different churches, we're sending that to 311 as well. So, that's a great resource. But yeah, also, if there's organizations that folks know that they would like to open up as a warming center, we're encouraging them to call EMA as well, and they'll get the word out.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Is there any other unfinished business seen? None. Is there any new business?
Announcement?
Announcements.
There will be a public forum on homelessness hosted by the Community Forum for Economic Justice on Tuesday, February 5th, from 6:00 to 8:00, at Our Lady of the Road, 744 South Michigan Street. The format will be a little bit different. It'll have an opportunity, they're actually convening homeless people themselves, that give them an opportunity to talk about their situation and what their needs are. So, it's an opportunity to share a meal and learn a little bit more about the needs of the homeless from the homeless.
Thank you. Anything else?
Yes, sir. So, next week, Monday, February 4th, Utilities Committee will meet to give an update on CSO issues from Public Works. I think Mr. Horvath and Kieran Fahy will be there to kind of give us an update on where they're at with the EPA. That'll be here at 5:00 p.m.
Okay. Anything else? I have one thing. If I could, I'm going to pass these out for the record. Pat Sowinski from 1236 Edgewood Drive wanted, he was going to come down here. I told him I'd take care of it for him. He wanted council members at all to have this, this packet. This kind of goes in line with our stormwater utility that we had. This is a major issue, and hopefully the stormwater utility is going to take care of this. What you have off of Riverside, between Riverside Park View on Lethrip is literally water. You can see by the yellow lines, all flooding down, and then floods into his house and the neighbor's two houses. Mr. Sowinski's garage, there's photos in here of everything that goes on there. He actually had to put a farm in front of his garage to try to keep the flooding out, and it didn't help. So, we actually have houses along there that are getting water damaged. And what it is, is it's poor drainage, it's bad engineering, I think at the time when Lethrip was put in. And it's not only a street issue, it's also underground storm drains that are not there along there. So, he approached the mayor, mayor's office a while back, and the other corrective action that we got out of the city at the time was high water signs when there's storm. And as long as I've been counselled, this has been flooding. I have a friend that lives back in this area, and there's always high water standing on the road, as well as thinking that it's going into people's homes. So, this is kind of apropos to the stormwater utility. So, he was going to come down here and talk in person, but I told him I would be a representative and do it for him. So, I wanted, he wanted everybody to have this. So, I have a copy for Mr. Pride. So, I wanted to share that with you guys.
One more. If perhaps Clerk Fowler could announce the citizen volunteers for committees, maybe?
Oh, yeah.
Citizen members, if you want to turn in applications to sit on any of the council committees, those, the website is open for applications, and it will be closing January 31st. So, you have until January 1st to do that if you are interested in serving on any of the council committees for $200,000.
Or applying personally, correct?
Absolutely. Always applying personally, as I would not.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler. Anything else on our new business seen? And we'll move to the privilege of the floor. Anybody wishing to speak to the common council about any subject except that it was on agenda tonight? Can do so. You have to state your name and address, and you have three minutes, and Gavin Furlik will time you. And I believe Murray, you are a veteran of this format, so go ahead.
Murray Miller, 1201 Perso Drive, South Bend, Indiana. Speaking concerning the $2 stormwater fee that council passed on, I'm concerned that there are people that aren't going to be able to bear the cost of that $2, considering the fact that the city raised the water rates 22% last year, they raised them 22% this year. Back in 2015, city added the CSO water rates to that, they raised them 5% for three years. A lot of stuff been raised up, but there hasn't been, I think, any CSO work in four years done. I know Eric will say that they did upgrades to the warranty in the plant. They were all part of maintenance. The last CSO project was East Bank sewer separator, number five. And so, there hasn't been any movement. I know they're trying to renegotiate it. However, the money's still being paid in, but there's nothing really reduced. And so, I'm just a little concerned with some of the people that can't afford that, that all this increase. I didn't get a 44% rate, but the water rates went up two years 44%. I'm a little concerned about that, for some of the residents of South Bend.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else entertain a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone. Stay well.